I'd like to call to order the Select Board meeting of November 27, 2023. Based on Mass. General Law Chapter 38, Section 21, we will be going into executive session. Like the motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Let's vote. Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Ms. Brooks?
Yes.
Chair of the House, yes, this is chair. This will go into executive session and get back to start our regular session meeting as close to 6:30 as possible.
Let the call to the Select Board meeting of November 27, 2023. We, uh, this is an open meeting which begins here in room 304. Uh, it may be recorded if our, um, if our fifth member shows up online. As of now, he's not there. Otherwise, we'll vote as in unison. If he doesn't online, we'll vote individually. At this point, please rise for the pleasure leaders.
I, pleasure leaders of the United States of America, to the Republic for which stands one nation under the eye indivisible, the Lord Jesus Christ.
Please remain standing as we honor our veterans, both past and present. Thank you very much. Please be seated. Once again, we apologize. Uh, we had town business to finish up, so a little bit late. Well, we'll catch up. Catch up. The warrant has been signed, and we're moving on to the first hearing. Six thirty, we're thirty minutes late. Pickleball and More, new alcohol, all alcohol license. Someone here from Pickleball and More. Please introduce yourself, come on up to the microphone, and let us know who you are, what you're doing.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. My name is Dona Obashan. I'm the owner of Pickleball and More that just started business in Big Value Plaza at seven eighteen Dartmouth Street.
Where's that?
Just around the corner, about three miles from here. And we've started about two weeks ago. We opened, got our occupancy permit, and we currently have about eleven hundred and fifty members to the, to the facility, and we're growing every day. So I, I've asked the, the committee or the town members to offer us or give us permission to serve beer and wine at our facility.
But doesn't it say here, doesn't it say?
Questions. Ms. McDonald, any comments here?
No, none.
You're our expert on the category.
On what, beer and wine?
No, on.
I'm a whiskey guy. I'm not a beer and wine guy. Sorry.
So my, my notes say, hearing Pickleball and More, new all alcohol license. You're asking for an all alcohol license. Beer and wine, correct?
Just beer and wine.
License category says wine and malt beverages. Restaurant common big.
Okay, this is wrong.
I told you you're the expert.
No, you just read.
This is wrong, that's all. Okay.
Yeah, it's just, it's listed wrong in the agenda.
Right. Just so everybody knows, this is beer and wine, please.
Thank you.
Make a motion that we approve the wine and malt beverage along with the restaurant common big license for Pickleball and More.
We have a second on that?
Second.
Any comments or questions from anybody? At this point, our fifth member's not online, so we can vote in unison. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, I hear none. Unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. I appreciate it. Hope to see you there.
The State House for approval from the, from the.
You want to advertise one more time what you're gonna do?
Well, we have nine indoor pickleball courts, the best facility in New England. If you want to learn how to play pickleball, come see us.
Great, beautiful, on Dartmouth Street, right? Is that the right street?
Yeah, seven eighteen, the old, well, it's not old, Big Value Plaza.
Beautiful shop right now, nice.
Thank you.
Good job.
I put a lot of time and effort into that.
I know you didn't. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks, Stanley. Appreciate it. Have a great evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, the hearing for Rico's Pizza, new restaurant, all alcohol license. Please step forward, introduce yourself and let us know what's going on.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Greg Colless. I'm an attorney in town with offices in Dartmouth. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, which is W C Group for Rico's Pizza. They are looking to, in the process of getting ready to open a premises at two twenty-seven State Road, a pizza and burger basically operation, sports bar, and they're here looking for a, an all alcohol license. With me tonight is Mr. William Medina, who is the, one of the principals of W C Group, and can answer any particular questions about the operation for you. But they're looking for the license to supplement or to, to be, you know, cooperate with their restaurant operation.
Questions from anybody?
Yeah, curious about the hours and hours of operation.
Good evening, everybody. Yes, well, the operation will be probably from eleven A M. to eleven P M. because this is a franchise from Connecticut. So my friend, his name is Rico, he started this place like, like eleven years ago, and he has eleven places right now. He has in Florida, New York, Long Island, Connecticut, and now we're coming to Dartmouth. It's basically like a sport bar with pizza, wings, and salads. No burgers. That I just want to put out there. And the concept is very simple, and it's just one size pizza, thin cross, hot oily pizza. So they average a thousand pizzas on a Friday night, so it seems like a very good concept for Dartmouth. And right now, we took over the old busters. They said they used to be busy all the time, so we just want to put that place in the map again.
So do you have a new oven for the operation?
The thing is, the ovens are three different ovens. It's conveyor, conveyor man. So we do like a four hundred and fifty pizzas in an hour. So basically, we're ready to go almost, but just waiting for the building permit right now, because we need to move a wall that is in the back, because the ovens are a little bigger than what it used to be in there before. They had a pizza oven there previous, because there was like a sport bar before, right? But they have more like a restaurant atmosphere, like a, like a little pub. Not little, but it's two hundred and seventy seats in there. So right now, I have to hire around forty or forty-five employees.
That's good for the town. That's nice.
It is. So with all your permission, all that, if you guys approve, we'll move forward. We already been cleaning and painting the inside, moving all the stuff around a little bit. We're just waiting for the building permit to start going a hundred percent.
Any other questions?
Go ahead, Sean.
No, go ahead, Hadi.
I was just going to say I'm thrilled to see that the building will be used.
It's been, I think, closed for like over three years.
Pandemic, yeah.
Yes, I talked to Mr. Michael, and when I spoke with him, he was like very like happy, and he said he had multiple offers, according to him, but he says nobody's prepared to take a place like that size. And I had multiple places. I have seven places. This will be my eighth place. I have bakeries, restaurants, and bars. That's what I do. So I started since two thousand and four. I know a little bit of the industry. So he believed in me, and he says, I know you're gonna do well over there, because they were doing well, they said.
Yes.
Yeah. And I had a lot of people commenting about they, they want the old buster to come back. It's gonna come back, but with a new face, obviously the same atmosphere, and I think it will be better than old busters, I hope.
That's the plan.
I hope you're not relying on Patriots football nights to have a big night anymore.
Now, they're not doing that great, so I'm trying. I don't know what they're doing wrong, but.
I don't think they know either.
We don't have enough time in this meeting to address that issue. Sorry, Sean.
Putting the game on there, and the other restaurant is like, can you change the channel, please?
I don't want them throwing pizza at the TVs.
No, no, that's why we, we kept all the TVs. We're gonna leave everything the way it was before. All we do is just moving the walls, so we can fit the ovens that we using, and we're gonna do, take out in the back.
Wonderful. Any other comments?
You said your hours of operation are gonna be eleven to eleven?
Yeah, we don't know yet, because the thing is a franchise, so they tell us the hours, but we, we have to see how the people will react to the menu.
Because I'm looking at the application for the hours of operation. It just says Sunday, it just says food service hours, but the alcohol service hours are one hour after opening, that you stated one hour before closing. So your Sunday is twelve to noon, your Monday through Thursday is twelve to ten, Friday, and Saturday is twelve to eleven. So I'm just.
Yes, because right now, what it is, I just wanna like put it, I didn't want to give you all the hours, because I will confuse you. From Monday to Thursday is one hour, like to ten, Friday and Saturday is to eleven, and Sunday might be into nine.
I just want to make sure, because whatever the licenses, whatever you put down for the hours, that's, that's the hours you're gonna serve.
Yes.
You can't serve before, you can't serve after. Okay. All right.
And then if we have to change that, I have to come back again and request for that to be changed.
Yep.
That's why you're the expert, Mr. McDonald.
Which we're always immutable to.
Great.
I'll make a motion that we approve the license for Rico's.
I'll second the motion.
Any comments or questions on the motion? Let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I hear none. Unanimous. Thank you very much. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna jump a little out of order here. We're gonna move to the appointments to the Waterways Committee. Mr. McGuinness, we need to introduce.
Yes, Andrea Langhauser and Eli Powell as the ad hoc member. I think they're both here. Andrea's here.
Any comments, want to come forward? Andrea? Limit your comments to thirty minutes.
I'm Andrea Langhauser. I live in precinct seven. I would welcome the opportunity to join the Waterways Committee. I've been on the Payton Air Harbor Management Plan Implementation Committee since inception, and it's, seems like an obvious connection over. I have, I presently retired, but I spent over thirty years as an environmental planner, working in state and local government. Most significantly, I was a senior planner in the Waterways, Chapter ninety-one Waterways Program, which licenses waterfront development and docks and piers, which is how I found Dartmouth in the first place.
My own personal experience, we're lucky to have you.
Thank you, did.
Any comments or questions?
Motion to appoint.
Second.
Ready to vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I hear none. Here in Andrea, thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eli, is Eli here? Oh, there he is. Right.
One down.
Hey there, thanks for having me. I'm a Dartmouth native and grew up working and playing on the waterfront in and around Dartmouth and Bosser's Bay, and I'm just looking forward to learning from people like Andrea and the rest of the folks on the Waterways Commission and being able to get back to my community in the waterfront as an ad hoc member.
This would be like the first member in training.
Right, this is, this is a step, this is a really wonderful thing they did for you, because they wanted you to be part of it, and it's a great, great idea, and I think it's gonna work great.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The questions. Mrs. Brooks, was this a student of yours?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, I hear none. Thanks so much, Eli.
Thanks very much.
Appreciate you doing.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks to you both. Okay, next. Next, what's that? Right. This is a proud moment for the town. I will say straight out that Jerry Hickey doesn't like the spotlight, almost refused to show up tonight, but I insisted, because he deserves recognition.
That's why the police are here, drag them down.
I'm gonna stand up and read this. Want to come up, Mr. Hickey? From the Town of Dartmouth, official Select Board citation. Be it known that the Dartmouth Select Board hereby extends its congratulations on this twenty-seventh day in November two thousand twenty-three to Gerald Hickey in recognition of twenty years of service to the town while on the Waterways Commission, twenty years. We thank you for devoting yourself to sustain and selfless voluntary service and dedication to the Town of Dartmouth. Thank you.
Congratulations.
It's a milestone for the town. You know, we, this town exists on volunteers. We have a, a fine staff that we pay on a daily basis, but without something like a hundred volunteers who give their time, we would not exist as a town, we wouldn't function. And Jerry's a perfect example of how it works and works best. Thank you, Jerry. Okay, we're gonna go back to the agenda, which would, gonna be the hearing, a tax classification hearing. Please step forward. We have a bunch of assessors here, so who's gonna start?
I think I'll do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, having us here tonight. So as you know, this is customary every year. The board votes on the, the rate for both residential and personal property, residential, excuse me, and commercial for the, for the town. With me tonight is Robert Micho, Chair of the Board of Assessors, Curtis Nunes, board member, and Kevin Santos is absent, and Jessica Pacheco is the acting town assessor. So I'll just read some of the information that you have in your packet, and I'll go through some of the statistics that you have available in front of you. The purpose of this tax, tax classification hearing is to set the minimum residential factor. Also, the board selectmen chose, choose the small commercial business exemption of ten percent. They must also choose the factor at this meeting. So some of the statistics you see here, F Y twenty-four new growth, one point one million in tax dollars. Residential new growth, it's broken out, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, commercial fifty-one thousand, industrial one hundred and seventy thousand, personal property six hundred and twenty-six thousand. And some of the big players you see here, N Star, Crowley LLC, those are the ones that they pointed out, which represent seventy percent of the increase. So the town's total value is seven, seven billion, nine hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-three million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars. It's an increase of close to seven hundred million in assessed value, and that's kind of important when we talk about, not to get off topic, but like the long-term capital, our borrowing capacity. So the state determines our borrowing capacity based on what our assessed value is in, in the aggregate. Last time we looked at this, the town had about two hundred and fifty million dollars in, in capacity, borrowing capacity. So this would jump that up, because the assessments have gone up. So that's something to keep in mind when we talk about long-term, long-term capital. Last year's tax levy was seventy-two point four million. This year, we're projecting it seventy-five point three million, and the residential class increased ten point five percent, commercial class increased four point two percent. The, the minimal residential factor last year was eighty-seven point five three, and the shift was one point seven five. If the board knows in the last few years, as far as I'm, I've been with the town, the board customarily goes with the one point seven five, and I'll review that with you in just a second. We added two hundred, we added twenty-five single-family homes at a, representing over five hundred thousand dollars per home on average, and the new medical building completion industrial park was assessed over nine million dollars. So those are some of the statistics that we have prior year, and if you go to the classification hearing and the data that's there, you'll see the, the factors that are involved. As mentioned, customarily, the, the board approves the one point seven five, which means that the, the residential factor would be eighty-seven point eight eight one one, where last year it was the eighty-seven point, just so you have a comparison, eighty-seven point five three four oh.
The, the first one was eighty-eight, seventy-seven point eleven?
Eighty-seven point eight eight eleven, correct. So what that does with the, to the rate on the residential side was, it would make the rate eight point three four residential, commercial, and industrial would go to seventeen two seven. That's on a median value home of four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars, and a commercial business of five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred. So taxes for F Y twenty-four would go to three thousand, eight twenty, eight eighty-nine, and, and on the median for commercial would be ninety-one, oh six, forty-seven, compared to thirty-six, ninety-six, thirty-eight in F Y twenty-three, and respectively eighty-nine, fifteen, seventy-two, and the difference is shown there, and the changes, three point five eight in residential and two point one four in commercial. So the other page is, is just data that's given to the board to show prior fiscal years and what's happened and what's been approved. You're looking at F Y twenty-two, twenty-one for residential, and then the C I P for commercial. And then the last piece of this is the scenarios that the board provides you every year, if in fact you don't go with the one point seven five, what that means and what the shift means to the residents not doing that. So I'm here also, the board is here to answer any questions they may have after you've reviewed this in your packet.
Mr. Micho, you want to say something?
It's the one chance a year to step forward.
Curtis? Go on, I'm good. Information is good. The, that chart only goes so high. Good morning.
Mr. McDonald?
Yeah, Gary, so the least harmful to the residents would be the one point seven five factor, correct?
Correct.
So if we stay with that, as we have in the past.
Correct.
Chances are roughly. Chances are roughly everybody's taxes would go up roughly 3.82%.
3.58.
3.58.
And if you looked at the 1 point, if you just looked at the jump at 1.72, so what, with the 1.72, you see that the, the shift is 839 to the residential and 1697 to the commercial. So the more, the more that's, the more that you lessen the factor, the more it shifted over to the resident, to the resident.
Because the values are going up.
Most of that's attributed to the.
Right, and there's only, there's only two factors where it'll actually increase the commercial end of it versus everything else would give them actually a reduction. All right, so based upon that, we're now in, in the assessing, we're in a reclassification process, correct? So there's going to be some type of a shift because of everybody's, is it the whole town is being reval or is it a segment of the town?
Sorry, town, they're working on it as we speak.
So it's, so.
The third party that's in there right now, Vision, is working on the reval. But I think the board also should keep in mind that, you know, and not speaking about the housing market, I think Curtis would know more about this than me, the housing market still is pretty stable. So that means that assessments would pretty much, pretty much stay the same. We saw a big increase in the 1.1 million in new growth, and that was because of certain factors that were involved, like you see there for like Eversource, for the gas lines and whatnot. But as far as commercial, I mean, as far as residential property, I would, I would say that it's probably, we're leveled off right now as far as like the sales are concerned, whether they're going to spike in values.
The data that you provided, I mean, you have people out there talking about how the town is getting so crowded, but yet you're looking at the data and only 25 new homes are being built. That's nothing.
Right.
You know?
Exactly, yeah.
I mean, it might look like stuff's going on, but when you have just 25 new residences as compared to over the previous years, that's actually a downturn as compared to previous years.
And keep in mind also, the town has a lot of protected land, so as, as that land is more protected, it's less, there's less to build.
Right, and, and the fact that I, if I, if I remember correctly, and Mr. Micho was the one who pointed it out, I think roughly five, six, maybe even a little bit longer, that there was only about 4,000 acres in town that were still buildable, you know? And that has slowly, you know, gone, gone away. So I mean, there's only, at some, at some point in time, the town will, will reach its saturation point, and then that's it. So, I mean.
Then we'll rely on?
Yeah.
Additions and things like that, remodels and things like that. But right now, we're in a good position where we can at least, at least take advantage of some new growth because of like the utilities.
There may be only 25 new homes, but there's a lot more cars.
That's a sizable point, you know?
They're from out of town.
Yeah, they're from out of town.
All right, I think Mrs. Brooks had a comment, question?
No, I have, I'm trying to teach myself how to read this.
It's, it's going to take you at least another, another turn.
Okay.
Trust me. I mean, it's.
Doing this for a while.
It's been, yeah, you have to really go through the whole thing and take a look at it. But the most important thing when you're looking at the classification is the hearing, is the rates and see the effect of the rates as to they pertain to the, to the tax base, to the tax rate.
And we currently charge the same rate for everything.
No, no.
No, split.
No, no, it's, no, it's, it's a split. The commercial is higher, the commercial is higher. The problem.
1.75, 1.75 would be.
1727.
See, the thing with, see with the, the thing with the commercial tax rate, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that businesses have more opportunities to affect the tax rate than the homeowners do. The homeowners, it's just the house. That's it. The business has.
Can absorb it.
Right, and, and their inventory and all that kind of stuff goes into effect into it. So there's a lot of difference. So they have a little bit more of an advantage than the homeowner does when it comes to the tax rate. The tax, it's, here's your home, this is the tax rate for your house. This is the business, this is your inventory, this is your, your leasing, this is your square footage, this is yada, yada, yada. So there's a lot more involved with the business.
Well, that's important because we don't want that.
Right. To say, to say we should be taxing the big box stores, well, the big box stores have a huge advantage over, over a single-family, you know, a single-family home. And it doesn't seem to. It doesn't seem to be passed on.
Yeah.
Knowledge. You know, it's just they see, well, how come they're not paying more taxes? Well, they have more things to deduct than the homeowner does, you know?
It's also safe to say that most of the increase, if we approve this rate, comes from the elevated value of the, of the property as opposed to any change in the rate.
Right, over the last, over the last three years, I mean, obviously you've seen assessments go up. If you own a home, if you own a business, you've seen those assessments going up. And so we value those differently than, than a real estate agent would, but we, it's, it's almost like in kind because we have to capture all that additional value in that home so that we, we can then properly assess the property and then tax it.
Well, I could tell you, starting this classification here is, my first classification here is, the median value of the home was somewhere around $225,000. And now it's at 459, so it's doubled.
Doubled in almost two years.
Right.
A perfect example, earlier we had somebody here who was going to open a new restaurant with new equipment. That's another increase for our revenue, much larger than what a single-family home would do.
Personal property, we would capture the personal property for the business.
Exactly.
And also, if we approve this, if we do the 1.75 whatever, the rate at $8.34, I know what a value is, being a retailer as long as I have, that's one hell of a value. It's really, it's incredibly low rate.
We talk about that in a lot of our meetings.
And that's the good news and sometimes not so good news.
What's the current rate right now?
9.2.
I believe it's 9.2. It was 87,530.
Well, that's, that's the factor, but you're asking for the, you're asking for the tax rate, I believe it's 9, 9.29?
Yeah.
I believe it's nine, it's.
Okay, so now everybody's, so, okay, so now here's another misnomer, okay? So right now my taxes are at $9, let's just say $9.30. Now they're going to approve a tax rate which could be at $8.34. My taxes are going down. No, because the value of your house has gone up.
So essentially, we've, we've made the adjustment.
Right, so it's.
Taxed at the levy limit, so we have to, so if values go down, the rate goes up. If the rate goes up, the values go down because we always have to meet the levy limit.
Right, right. I mean, that, and that's, I mean, that's. This is why you're going to be, this is why you almost have to be a theoretical science to understand this stuff, because it's, it's just, it's like this all the time.
It might take a couple of times before.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, it's, it's a little confusing.
This is, this, this again is the most fair.
Any, any comments from the board at all in terms of the rate or recommendation? Are we, Gary, you made enough comment, anybody?
I'm going to recommend.
But I do know at $8.34, it's one of the lowest in the area, so.
Any questions for Gary, from the board members?
No.
Do we have a discussion on the, on the rate or recommendation?
I'm going to recommend the 1.75 of classification hearing.
And to set the residential rates, make sure you set.
Yeah, and.
Be in the dual rate.
And, and the.
Do you need to vote on the dual rate separately?
So can I just make a recommendation?
On the commercial exemption first.
Yeah, I have to vote on that first. So you have to vote.
I'll make a motion that we approve the commercial exemption rate of 10% for small businesses in town.
Second.
Can we, can we get a slight explanation on that, Gary?
So based on the headcount of employees, they have to provide that information to the, to the board of assessors, and they determine whether or not the business meets qualification for small business exemption.
Okay.
Do you know, quickly off the top of your head, how many businesses were from last year?
How many businesses got the small business exemption? 91.
Thank you.
91, that was an accurate number, thank you. Impressive. That's a motion?
Yes.
Second on the motion?
Seconded already.
Any discussion on the motion? Let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I hear none. 4-0 unanimous. Next.
And we make a motion for the residential at 1.75. And the factor, what is it, 87.811?
87.811, right.
Does the motion have to include the dual, the dual rate?
You probably should include it in the motion, I mean.
In the motion, you want to restate that, Mr. Mixon?
And I'll just add, the commercial rate would be 17.
17.
17.27.
Residential rate at 8.34.
Residential rate is $8.34.
All right, I'll second that.
Any comments or questions on that motion? Let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, I hear none. 4-0 unanimous. What else do you need from us? We appreciate the work done by Gary and his team from the assessors, it's a big job, and we hope we've done the best we can for our residents for the time being, and the story is to be continued. Thank you very much. Great job.
Nice to see you, Mr. Micho.
Okay. Ready for the next?
Yep.
New common victory license Killer Bee, 718 Dartmouth Street. Anybody here? Ah. Give us a story, a name and a story.
Yep, good evening, Select Board, nice to meet you guys. I'm right behind Donut, I was in here before, I'm renting from him. I'm here to solve the Patriots problem.
All right.
Sign up.
It'd be 20 years. So what we do, we do athletic training. We have a, it's about a 15 by 25 yard turf, so we'll do athletic training in there. We also will have, we have our teams out of there, so we have teams that come out and play out of there. It's all youth, so generally speaking, 12 and under right now, we'll do a little bit older than that, but we're also going to have birthday parties, so that's why I'm here today. We're going to have birthday parties for kids. I have VR stuff that I use for training. I also have some PlayStation setup, so that's why I'm here. I was told that I should come meet you guys and tell you what I'm all about, but basically a youth program that we're trying to do and have something for the kids and encourage them to do better in their life and sports.
Very nice.
And hopefully, maybe we'll get some people to help out, maybe Mac Jones. I, my son's watching if this is videoed, I like Mac Jones, I'm sorry, son.
Are you located within the pickleball and more, or?
We're on the backside, so I, I think, I don't know the real history.
It's actually behind.
Yeah, it's 17, he's 17.
Karate studios behind it.
Right behind Master Lease, basically. So we hear, so the pickleball people hear karate going on one side and.
Encouraging.
Most likely my quarterback's on the other side yelling, "Let's go," because they want to beat Tom Brady. But yeah, it's, it looks good. We obviously just got our occupancy permit, but looking to do more for birthday parties down the road. It's crazy though, a lot of people want to just rent turf right now for little, for the little guys.
How do you get to the facility?
So he, on the backside, he cut an excess door, so we have parking on the backside of the building there. We're parking back there, so there's parking right outside the backside of that metal building.
What are the hours?
So right now we're doing, right now it's just 5 to 8. On the weekend, we're going to, on the weekend it'll be a kind of an all-day affair. So 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, that's really about it. We don't really want to go past 8:00 PM.
So, and you drive around to the back and they look for the doorway there?
Correct.
Is there a sign back there?
We have a sign going in right now. We just applied for the sign permit, it's one thing at a time, so just trying to get it all accomplished at one point in time.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I hear none. Congratulations, good luck.
Good luck.
Nice to meet you.
Location.
Yes, it is, very nice location, right up the road from our house.
Okay, we're trying to catch up here now. Next is the appointment to the Council on Aging Board. Having the executive.
I didn't see her back.
A different hat.
Good evening, Amy DePietro, Council on Aging. Unfortunately, Mr. Wallaka is not here tonight, but the Council on Aging Board has nominated Mr. Attorney Brandon Wallaka. He is an elder law attorney, practices locally with strong ties to the community. I think he'll be fantastic, fantastic addition.
Any comments, questions?
Actually, I have one question.
Okay, fire away.
In reviewing the letter from Mr., from Attorney Wallaka and looking at his resume, there's just one question that I have to ask. Does he live in Dartmouth? Because it doesn't indicate it.
He does live in Dartmouth, yes.
So.
I, I don't have his correct address, but he does live in Dartmouth.
Yeah, it's just, you know, in the future, if anybody does apply, make sure you, you say that you live in Dartmouth, because then the question doesn't go wrong.
Of course.
You know, I, it's just one of those, I want to make sure.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any comments or questions? Let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I hear none, unanimous. Thank you for.
Thank you very much.
Presentation, Amy.
Thanks, Amy.
Next, appointment to the Dartmouth Cultural Council, Christine Hubert. Please step forward.
I'm wondering if I can see above this. Hi, I'm Christine Hubert, and I'm hoping to be part of the Dartmouth Cultural Council. I live in Dartmouth. I've lived here for 50 some odd years, and I've been actively involved in the arts for the whole time. So I'm retired and going to try to be productive with my time.
You know, the Cultural Council is a singing group, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'm right there. It could be.
I'll make a motion to appoint.
Second.
All I know is that we have, I have deep roots with Christine, and she couldn't be a better appointment. Appreciate your stepping forward, you'll do a fantastic job for us.
Thank you.
We have to vote for you first, though. Okay. We, we have a motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, I hear none. Unanimous. Thank you very much for stepping forward.
Thank you.
It's good to see you.
Thank you very much, for your offer.
Michael's an old Grateful Dead fan, so. You know who they are, Sean?
Yes, I know who they are.
Don't forget, I was born in 57.
Okay, we're moving along.
Still a young.
We're going down to the Dartmouth Community Service Outreach, Outreach Team, Update and Logo Design. Thank you for waiting for us again.
See Matt back there? That podium hides a lot of things.
Yep.
Look at, look at who's hiding back here.
Oh, wow, even Dolores, where'd you come from, Dolores? Thanks again for waiting for us.
Okay, good evening, Amy DePietro with the Dartmouth Council on Aging, as well as the Dartmouth Community Service Outreach Team. Matthew Dance Row, our outreach coordinator, is here to discuss the specifics of what we have been accomplishing over the last almost 12 months, actually. But first, I would like to thank Mr. McGinnis and the Select Board for allowing us to create this team. Thank you to Dolores and Officer Baptista, Maura Reimer with the Board of Health, Peter Chase with DCTV. With, using the expertise from all of the various departments, we've really been able to make an impact on people's lives in the community. to make an impact on people's lives in the community. So here's Matthew with kind of staggering numbers, in my opinion.
Yes.
Staggering, unacceptable.
So, I believe you were all given something that shows some of the numbers. Basically, it's been almost a three-times increase of the people who are just living on the streets here in town. Back in January, when we did the pit count, they counted seven. Right now, I could count twenty-one to twenty-five that are either living in camps, living on cars, living in places like basements or abandoned buildings. And that's just what's been going on all around the country, obviously. New Bedford, Fall River, Westport, everywhere is having, seeing these numbers of an increase. In the year, we've had almost eighty phone calls about different homeless issues, whether they be people who are on the cusp of it from evictions, to people with couch surfing, that type of stuff. Those numbers include a couple of Dartmouth employees who've also been involved with us. It's just been really, really increasing numbers, and you're just seeing it all over the place. Our office has also helped with some of the other basic needs, things like housing applications, SNAP applications, insurance, health insurance applications, even social security applications. And it's just, you know, the more you go out, the more you find. That's basically what you're seeing.
Matt, has anybody that you've contacted actually refused services?
There are people who refuse not to engage in the process of finding a place. We do a little support with, visit them once in a while, give them food, give them clothing, but, you know, they refuse to get involved in the services. There is at least one of them that I know of.
Do they?
There's a lot of people.
Can I say why? Is it like, 'cause?
Don't like people, like to continue their lifestyle of drinking, you know, that type of stuff, like to be out in the woods. There's some of those excuses. I also have issues with, and this is the case when I was working in the Bedford Services, no-shows who don't show up to appointments. You don't hear from them for a while, then they call again. You get some of those, too, so.
Yeah.
You know, there could be other reasons, too. I mean, sometimes it's mental health, sometimes it's having bad experiences in the past, trauma, so it could be a combination of other things, too, or being separated, because some of the families that we work with are individuals. If they're placed in shelters, they may be separated from family members, so there could be various reasons why.
You know, you're seeing a lot of couples who, because there's less female spaces in the shelter, and you can get the male maybe in the shelter, the male won't leave the female, which is understandable. It's about fifty-fifty Dartmouth residents with people who are coming here to get away from some of the encampments in the bigger cities. There's a couple I'm working with now, they have past addiction issues, and to stay away from those addiction issues, they came to Dartmouth, so they can be alone and away from, you know, those types of encampments in Fall River, New Bedford.
I'd like to just say that I think this is the most understated group of individuals in this committee that I've ever seen. These are all mostly town employees who have been asked to step forward and get out of their regular job, add time and effort to what they're doing to serve a purpose that is growing at a rate that's almost uncontrollable. And it's a proud moment for our town with the kind of work that you all do together. Leadership is, and I've seen it work. I've had a personal old staff employee of mine who needed help, and Matt stepped forward, and we got him what he needed. So it's, it's, it's an unfortunate need, but a fantastic group of people who, all they wanna do is help somebody else out, and over and above their own job, and the leadership of everybody there involved. So, thank you.
On a lighter note, Angela, who works at the Council on Aging, designed a logo for the outreach team, and I think you have that also.
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah, it's a.
Great job.
No. No.
Oh, that's it. Oh, yeah, it's in the packet, sorry. I thought you meant you handed it out. No, it's in there together while you were talking.
Yeah, so stop branding some things here and there, so.
Can Peter get it up? Oh, there, okay, yeah.
Can't see it, David.
Can't see it, okay.
You have to zoom it in. He's zooming in.
Hand it to Peter.
Okay, Peter.
Thank you, she's gotta hand it to him.
Yeah, don't zoom me, that's.
Zoom in, she's coming.
I don't know if he's got a camera in there to do it, but.
I don't know. The logo, though, is very inclusive.
She also designed the Council on Aging, too.
Yeah.
Big job.
And like we said, too, and I think one of the comments we made earlier, too, is that the face of the homeless is not the face of the homeless from twenty years ago. And I think when people think about homelessness and a person they identify as being homeless, it's not the same as it was twenty years ago. We have people who are classified as homeless who get up every day and go to work, but because of the cost of housing, they can't afford shelter, but they still go to work every day. And people who have families, children, who go to school every day, they live in cars or house or couch surfing, but they can't afford shelter. So it doesn't look like it looked twenty years ago. It could be you or me, not now.
Yeah, a good example is, out of all these people, ninety-nine percent of them have some type of income. It's just, might be very low income, but they have some type of income. So there's very, there's only a couple I can think of that have no income.
Actually, they're trying to be responsible.
Yeah, but it's just no housing. Affordable housing.
Affordable housing. It's a big issue all over the place.
All over the place.
And then we gotta also thank, you know, a lot of the nonprofits from New Bedford
and Taunton who've, who've done a lot of work in the town, too. We've got a couple of people, I mean, we do have one person who's gotten into Dartmouth housing, which is good. We have another person who found, we helped find, a cheaper apartment in New Bedford. So there are some few and far between people who've gotten off the street or off the couch, which is good, but, you know, it's long work.
Yeah.
Yeah. Great job.
Thank you.
Dolores, you started off as our youth advocate, and we just keep piling on and just keep taking on.
And you keep taking it, though.
Thank you.
We love it.
Thank you.
So Matty has to do it, right.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Great presentation, appreciate it.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Okay. We ready to move on to the Thirsty Whale Police Calls for Service Discussion. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes, so at the last meeting, the board had looked at a number of calls for all the liquor license renewals, all the calls for service. There were a number of calls for the Thirsty Whale. They, the board had asked to have their representatives from the Thirsty Whale come in to discuss the number of calls. We also have Deputy Chief Morenci here to answer any calls, any questions related to the calls as well, so with that. If you wanna come up and introduce yourselves.
How's it going? Sean St. Aubin.
Gina St. Aubin.
Great.
How you doing, guys?
You want, any comments before we start, or you wanna ask questions, or what do you prefer?
No, I'm just curious about, you know, what type of calls or how many compared to the previous, you know, last year, and from what I understand, it was just a follow-up to see, you know, and go over, see how we, where we stated last year and to where we are today.
One of the things that we have asked the police department is to provide us with calls when it comes time to renew the liquor licenses in town, just to see what's going on. And a lot of the establishments, you know, were single digits, a couple of them double digits, some were just absolutely, what you intend, what you're thinking of, you know, was high, and it's like odd, and then you look at the actual number of calls and you can see why. But yours was a hundred and fourteen calls.
Hundred and fourteen, now?
Yeah. According to this, you had one A and B, one, eight alarm or burglar alarm calls, one assist other PD, which I'm not quite sure, five disturbance general, one motor vehicle stop. Unfortunately, if, we have found out that if the police department stops a motor vehicle in front of your establishment, even though it's not related to your establishment, it's reported there.
I get it, I understand.
But, I mean, everybody has a motor vehicle stop somewhere.
I get it.
Only one stop.
Right, and it's only one stop, so we're not concerned about that. The property check, that's, the guys doing their job, they're just checking to see, making sure, they make a note, but the other thing was eighty-three directed patrols responses, so I'm just, I don't, not sure what those are. Yeah, so deputy, so we just wanna make sure, we just wanna make sure that, you know, we're not here to tell you how to do your business. We wanna make sure that you're doing your business the way, you know, everybody expects it to be. We wanna make sure that it's safe for the employees, safe for the owners, but we also wanna make sure it's safe for the patrons, but also wanna make sure it's safe for when guys like, you know, Deputy Chief Morenci makes, or somebody like Officer Baptista makes the call, you know, that he's safe when he goes to make sure, so we wanna make sure that's, so that, but can you speak to those? Yeah.
So I wasn't really given specifics from the chief in terms of what you were looking for, so I kinda looked at two, two different things. I looked at responses. So responses is everything in total. So for the past year, what I had was our crime app analyst, Kerry LeBeau, just pulled some numbers for me and then break them down a little bit, so that it would give a clear picture to the board exactly what type of services that we're offering and what type of services they need down at the Thirsty Whale. So in terms of responses, from November to November to the current date now, we had a hundred and forty-one total responses. So I know at first that might sound a little over the top and a little overwhelming, so that's why we had to dig into it a little bit more. Out of the hundred and forty-one, a hundred and twenty-one of those responses were officer-initiated or self-initiated. So we either have a call for service from someone in the community, or we're self-initiated or department-initiated. The property checks, like you stated, very simple, go by, check really quickly, yep. Put me in for a property check of Jones Park, Thirsty Whale, whatever the location in the town that we took a drive-through. Sometimes it's a building, checking the doors, make sure it's secure, something along those lines. Directed patrols happen more when there's been a little more history. There's been issues that date back a little bit more, and we had experienced some problems in the past that might have been prior to your ownership. So what we've done as a department is we've tried to become proactive. So every weekend, Friday into Saturday, and then Saturday into Sunday in the early morning hours where they're letting out for the night, if we have units available, we'll have them pretty much just set up in the area. It's called directed patrol. They're gonna be there as a deterrent, be visible if people are looking to cause a problem. Hopefully, they keep moving into the city or they go somewhere else to cause that problem. So that's the majority of calls that you're seeing. That has nothing to do with patrons that have called for help, the establishment, the residents, nobody has called for assistance. That's the department being proactive. When you get rid of the hundred and twenty-one self-initiated, now you're down to twenty. The numbers that Kerry LeBeau pulled was ten out of that twenty were alarm calls, so now we're down to ten calls for services. Seven out of the ten were disturbance general, which usually is a noise, a noise issue. It's either somebody in the parking lot being loud, maybe the car's got music on that's too loud, maybe there's a disturbance motor vehicle where a car has been in tires, something of that effect. That was seven. We had two assist other PDs, which could have been New Bedford coming just over the line to either check on a car, check on a person. They requested us to assist. And then there was one assault and battery. So out of the, like I said, a hundred and forty-one calls, one twenty-one were initiated by us, and then I showed you the breakdown, I just explained the breakdown. Ten alarms, seven disturbances, more noise violations, one A and B, and two assist other PDs. What I did, too, is I spoke with Detective Sergeant Olivera. He had a meeting, I believe, with you last year, just voiced some of what our concerns, not only as a department but as a town, of what was going on at that establishment. They came up with a list of things that they were gonna do, the establishment and Detective Olivera, Sergeant Olivera. That included a license scanning tool, metal detective device, changing their hours so they weren't serving quite as late, they weren't letting people back in after a certain amount of time. They raised their age to twenty-five, they hired additional private security, no hoodie, some dress code type issues that they addressed, and then some signage for no loitering. According to Detective Sergeant Olivera, they've complied with all the directives, all the suggestions that came up. They've gone through their, on their second security company, because the first security company wasn't really meeting their needs or enforcing their policies. And then, most recently, they have an iDetect ID scanner. Not only does it weed out the fake IDs, but it also logs all the people that come in. So from what I can see, speaking to Detective Sergeant Olivera, he's pleased with the way things are going there, and I can't say that I feel differently based on how these calls break down.
I can tell you, that information sheds a different light, and at this point in time, the only thing I can say is, great job, guys. Really, great job. Because, I mean, if, if there was a problem with a customer, it would say problem with a customer. If there was an OUI, it would also say that, or, you know, drunken patron or something, because it's there in other, some other places, so there's nothing of that case. And this is a far cry then from what was there previously, and, you know, I hope you didn't, we just need to follow up on something like this, and when we get something like this, boy, I tell you, it makes me so happy. It really does, because it, it means that you're vested in your business, you really wanna make a try, and you're doing, and you're doing the job and you're doing it right. And I just wanna say, great job, guys. Congratulations.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
I think hearing what the term directed patrols, now knowing what that means, that's completely different than what I assumed it was, which was people calling for help. I think it's great that the police department has made themselves visible on those evenings as a deterrent. Perfect, that's what we would want. We just, I just didn't know it was called directed patrols.
Right, well, I mean, it's, it's, yeah. Seeing something like this puts it in a different context, because there are some, there are some other ones, you know, ambulance, we know there's an, we know why there was an ambulance. Okay, somebody was sick, somebody hurt, but now, now getting the numbers, looking at the numbers is a completely different context, and it's, like I said, congratulations, guys. Good job.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
I have a question, deputy. So with these directed patrols, these eighty-three, eighty-three reports.
So I apologize, my numbers might be a little bit different than yours. I had asked Kerry to run.
Right, but you said one twenty-one, you gave me.
Yep, total of one twenty-one.
So these are for past performances, basically from last year, not this year?
It was from November of twenty-two to just last week.
Would it be safe to say there'd be a lot less of these directed patrols moving forward?
We haven't asked the guys to stop, because I think if it's working.
It does help.
If it's not broke, I don't think we need to fix it.
Okay, yeah, all right.
We do have our south units, it's, south isn't a huge area.
Yeah.
If another call for service does come in, we're obviously.
You'll have a car there anyway.
We're moving on.
Correct, yeah.
So we're there unless another call for service.
All right, I just wanna, you know, I figured, what is the plan moving forward? That's all.
Well, it certainly sounds like it's done exactly what we need it to do, which is deter problems, so.
Yes.
I'd like to make a.
If we have a half-hour, hour period at that time of night and things are slow, I think it's a good place for our guys to be. I don't really have a plan to pull them out of there.
Sure.
Unless we have another location or another issue that comes up, then we'll switch gears.
I mean, it's, it's working. I mean, clearly, it shows that it's working, so.
I got a couple of comments. This is the first report you've given us, and you did a great job. Thank you. But I also think it's a real lesson learned for this Select Board. On paper, this looked like we had a disaster on our hands.
I was getting worried.
And my, and my point is that we get a lot of data all the time, and it's our job to be fair and open about any issue that comes forward to us, and get the facts, get the presentation, and then make a determination. And this, these issues have come along over the last few months to this board, and the lesson learned here is we gotta make sure that we do the process and give it the dignity it deserves. And you got, was you guys deserved, because you did the right thing as well. So I think it's a great lesson for all of us.
Mm-hmm.
And appreciate it.
I wanna say quickly, too, I'm proud of the work my guys are doing, but it's definitely collaborative. If they didn't step up and try to meet what they said that they were gonna do, we might be in a different situation now, so it's definitely, it's a team effort. I wanna thank you guys.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions?
Like I said, if there's anything that we can do, like I said, just if anybody can address it with us, we are more than on board to do whatever we can, like we've done in the past, like this, this whole previous year to get it to where we are now. And like I said, unfortunately, can't pick and choose our customers, and we're just gonna deal with what's thrown at us and try to do the best we can. We increase security. Some nights I have three guys at the door compared to just two, depending what the night is, and we just take that approach. And like I said, with Dartmouth always being out there, it just definitely helps our situation a little bit.
Stay the course. You're doing a great job.
Maybe the Deputy Chief off-duty, he'd be a pretty good guy at the door for you, I think. Any other, anything else?
No.
Thanks so much for coming in.
Appreciate everything. Thank you very much.
Thanks, deputy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vic.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Well, he looked stunned when he heard the numbers. And I thought, well, that's weird. If you're making phone calls.
Okay. Alcohol license renewals. You want to take this, Mr. McDonald?
Let me get to the page.
Go right ahead. It's on the...
I was, I was already over at the minute. No, I got it here. I make a motion that we approve the restaurant all alcoholic common Vic license for the 99 Restaurant Pub, the Brazilian Grill, Buffalo Wild Wings, Phase Two Inc., Joe's Original, Sail Loft, and the Olive Garden Italian Restaurant.
Second.
Any comments or questions on this motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I hear none. Unanimous, four zero.
Make a motion that we approve the restaurant all alcoholic common Vic with entertainment license for Rachel's Lakeside and the Scuttle Buck Coffee Company LLC.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I hear none. Four zero, unanimous.
Make a motion that we approve the restaurant wine and malt beverages common Vic license for the Peking Garden Buffet.
Second.
Any comments, questions? Let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I hear none. Unanimous, four zero.
This one's always been my favorite.
Oh, boy.
Make a motion that we approve the restaurant wine and malt beverages common Vic with entertainment for Chuck E. Cheese.
Second.
Any comments, questions? Keep your opinions to yourself here.
As for the parents.
Okay.
You sure?
Okay. Let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Unanimous, four zero.
Make a motion that we approve the club all alcoholic common Vic with entertainment for the Kings Inn.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I hear none. Unanimous, four zero.
Make a motion that we approve the packaged goods stores all alcoholic for Acme Liquors.
Second.
Any comments, questions? So let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Unanimous, four zero.
Make a motion to we approve the packaged goods stores wine and malt beverages for the Bliss Express Inc. and CNS variety.
A second.
Comments or questions? Let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I hear none. Four zero, unanimous. Thank you, McDonald. Outstanding work. Next on the list would be the town administrator update. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes, thank you. So the finance team, myself and the finance director Gary Carrero, continue to work with Mr. Kylie and Ms. Sam Maguire at the school department to review their budget for FY '25. We're also been looking, working with the long-term planning committee. So we hope to present at a future joint meeting some plans to get, be proactive about the FY '25 budget. So that will be coming up within the next month or so. Bliss Corner cleanup, we received our first permanent solution statement for 85 McCabe Street. This is a letter from the LSP overseeing the cleanup, that the site has been formally remediated and there are no significant risks of harm or human health on the property. So that permanent solution statement goes to the EPA for their final approval. But that was one of the first properties cleaned up, and we expect to see more in the near future. So that's a positive news for the Bliss Corner area. Eversource has updated their rates to start in January 2024. Their new rate is gonna be 17.251 cents per kilowatt hour for residential customers. Just as a point of reference, the town has the aggregation contract. The town's aggregation rate is 15.784 cents per kilowatt hour, so it's nearly two cents per kilowatt hour lower. So that's positive news for the residents of the town of Dartmouth, saving over Eversource's residential rate. And lastly, I don't know if I mentioned this in my last update, but the veterans luncheon was held at Rachel's Lakeside earlier this month with over 200 veterans in attendance. I just want to thank Matt Bruyier and Amy DePietro for their help organizing, as well as Representative Markey and the friends of the Council on Aging for hosting. They did a wonderful job. It's a great event every year. And that's all I have.
Okay. Next, old business.
Bliss Corner, you heard an update on the property starting to get formally finalized, cleaned up. Lake Nooka Choke, no new updates. Miss Bill Broadbent, no new updates as yet. And the Mast EP Title V, no new updates.
Okay. Minutes. I have one comment. It's a typo. Under new business, A, B, C...
E, F, G.
Uh, C. Mr. Mike Garnier's name is spelled incorrectly.
Okay, well, fix that.
It's spelled G-A-R-N-I-E, like the shampoo.
Yeah.
But it's G-A-G-N-E, Garnier?
G-A-G-N-E.
Right. His mother and father would probably be happy we changed it.
Auto correct. And that wouldn't be good.
That's okay. It sounds like Garnier.
Okay. Do you want to vote for them with the revision?
Any other comments on the minutes?
No. Make a motion to approve as amended.
As amended.
Yep. As amended, second.
Okay. Let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I hear none. Minutes approved. Select Board updates. Anyone who wants to step forward?
Mr. McGinnis, on your update, what was your second item?
The Bliss Corner project.
Bliss Corner.
Yeah, Bliss Corner.
Right after that.
Eversource?
Nooka Choke.
Oh, Eversource, thank you.
Eversource, yes.
Okay. All right. That's, okay. I had something in my mind, and then all of a sudden it just blanked right out. It was a tough weekend. Eversource has, I'm assuming we have not received any payment for the damage of the sewer line yet.
Reached out twice. They offered, they made an offer that was not commensurate with the, not amount of damage sustained.
The work that they wanted to be done over on Allen Street, was it performed?
No.
It was not performed?
No, we checked.
Okay. So, all right. That's why I wanted to make sure. Because if it was performed and they did it without licensing...
Yeah, I think you had asked last month, and we checked last month. So as of that last month.
So I wanted to make sure. So, okay.
And, and if they did, then the fee for that would be $7,500?
Triple.
Yeah.
It would be triple.
No, I, I, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. They, you know, they damaged the sewer line and they own it and they're not paying for it. They're not getting, they're not getting a permit to do a damn amount of work in this town until they pay that check. I don't care. I don't, you want to consider it blackmail, whatever it is, I don't care.
And they sign an IOU?
No, I want the check. $7,000 and change. You know?
The next project is right in front of your house.
The next...
No, it's not, actually. They don't want to come my way.
Okay, all right.
The next person to talk blinks, loses.
Well, I think I'm happy.
All right, we'll wait and see what happens on that one. Updates for many members here?
I have, well, another update information. This December 3, Town Hall Christmas tree lighting. One of the happiest times for me. Bring your kids up, plenty, plenty of prizes and food. Bank Five is, is one of the sponsors. CFC Church is another. We had a great, great turnout last year, the largest I've ever seen. I hope we can do, we can do even better this, this, this year. So December 3, 4:30 to 5:30, tree lighting.
We have a weather report?
Beautiful.
Supposed to be good.
Excellent. Okay.
Come on down.
Mr. Mickelson?
That's it.
Mr. McDonald?
Yep. Received this from Maria Connor. There's a Christmas Day dinner being sponsored by the Jewish community of the great New Bedford on Christmas Day, November, December 25th, at the Holy Name of the Sacred Heart Jesus Parish Hall at 121 Mount Pleasant Street in New Bedford. The doors open at 10:30. Dinner is served at noon. The deadline for reservations for seniors is on the 22nd of December. You can call 508-999-4717. Or if you need further information or more details on this, please call the Council on Aging. They'll be more than happy to point you in the right direction. And I'll give this to Peter. And Peter, you can put this up on the announcements, on the scroll in between programming, please.
Very good. Mrs. Brooks?
This Friday night, December 1, is the Bowie Tree lighting down in Paydare. So there's activities between the hours of 4 and 8. And at 7 PM will be the official lighting of the Bowie Tree.
Oh, boy. It's a great turnout the last few years.
Yep.
Weather was great. So hopefully you can make it.
Had a lot of lighting going on there.
Anything else, Mrs.?
Maybe that's where Eversource can make that money back.
And probably worth mentioning, we, on the select board calendar, we are meeting on the 11th, and we had a tentative meeting scheduled for the 18th, which we probably are not going to have. We meet on the 11th. It'll be the last, tentatively, probably pretty much, yes, the last meeting will be in December 11. Anybody else?
Motion to adjourn.
Hang on.
It's here. Okay. The Dartmouth Historical Commission has been patiently awaiting the package that you all had decided would be put together by Mr. McGinnis regarding the RFP for the environmental assessment and the structural assessment. And to this date, we have seen nothing. I don't want to let it go too long because, as you just said, your next meeting is on the 11th of December, and there'll be no more select board meetings after that until 2024. So if, in fact, there is this package out there, we need to be able to see it.
Well, let's see. It's not on the agenda, but I think it's worth, can we comment on that, Mr. McGinnis?
Yeah, it's on the agenda for the 11th.
It is on the agenda. Okay.
Go ahead. So it will not be available until that date?
It's for the select board to review on the 11th.
So, okay. All right. Okay.
So, so we can, it's for us to review and decide what to do with it. And so there's nothing more we can do until we see it and then decide and then present it to...
Correct. The board had asked to pull the information together to present at a upcoming meeting. And we're pulling the information together. We have, we've received most of it, I think, as of last week, not in time to put on this agenda, but for...
Okay. Anybody have any comment on that, or we'll look forward to hearing on the 11th?
Well, and you all realize that this was promised over, probably close to a month ago. Yeah. Okay. All right.
We, we did a, as I recall, we said it was not gonna be overnight, but we got it. Okay?
Yes. I support.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
Motion to adjourn.
McDonald. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second. Any comments or questions on the motion at hand? Let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I hear none. And this meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you very much.